Tony heard from Ben.
And?
He emailed us, he ain't coming. And I think Tyler had that.
Tyler's, yeah.
Nope, we have a call.
We do.
Uh, no Lorraine tonight.
Five forty-four, he emailed all of us.
Work?
Yep.
Okay, so we will open the June sixth meeting of the Select Board, we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started tonight, I just want to acknowledge that today's the seventy-eighth anniversary of D-Day. And some of us may still have, you know, grandparents and parents who served in the military at that time. And again, we thank them all for their service or sacrifice. With that, we will move on to manifests. Everybody have a chance to look at them?
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the accounts payable manifest of May thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And the payroll manifest of May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous, um, minutes.
I didn't make any.
I didn't make any changes.
I, I didn't either.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two as written.
I'll second, sorry.
All in favor? Uh, assigned boards and committees?
Nothing from budget.
Or sip, or?
Or, we don't have anything from plan, yeah. Uh, Marston continues to move along, um, they're just, they're doing a great job out there. Uh, sponsorships continue to grow, um, we do need to, I need to make sure that we update the, um, Facebook page because we've gotten some great photos from Steve that I haven't posted yet. And, um, you know, we've got some great sponsors onboard that we've got to make sure that we're, um, giving them the visibility that they deserve, so that is on my plate. Town administrators' report.
Alright, uh, let's see, I wasn't with you two weeks ago, um, since we last been together, the legislature finished its session. Um, I sent you a thing from the NHMA of their kind of recap of the, of the year. Um, overall, I sat in on a webinar last week about it, they're quite happy with the results. There was a lot of stuff in the hopper this year that was, could have been pretty unpleasant for municipalities. The whole breadth of municipal affairs, there was from, uh, voting to assessing and everything in between, uh, A to V or whatever. Uh, and they were quite happy with the, the end product and all of these, a lot of things didn't, didn't survive, uh, so they were, they were pleased with that. Uh, and also, uh, we can all be pleased, I think, with the, uh, the revenue sharing that's coming back. The state's revenues are through the roof, uh, and the legislature, um, has carved out a couple of ways that that's gonna, uh, find some money back to us. Uh, unfortunately, it's all one-time things, so it's not things that we can, you know, they didn't make any structural changes and nothing we can budget on next year but, um, big enough dollars to be impactful in some way. Um, uh, most importantly, the New Hampshire retirement system, they're gonna, uh, make a one-time, uh, payment of seven and a half percent of that, of what used to be their larger commitment to that, that went away fifteen years ago or so. That, uh, that'll save us in twenty-two, um, tens of thousands, thirty, thirty thousand maybe, I haven't done the exact math, but it's, it's noticeable. Um, presumably, the school will also enjoy some benefit there, that's a big, I don't follow their budget, but obviously, the retirement line has gotta be a big one for, for them and their, you know, there's some revenue sharing going to that as well. So, um, that's good news for twenty twenty-two taxes. Also, one-time money for, um, uh, highway block grants, um, they, we, we get money every year from, uh, for that. Uh, this year's gonna be more, um, one, again, one-time, uh, but, uh, that'll be something that you'll be able to spend or leave in the bank or use to offset taxes, but however that plays out later in the year.
Does highway block grant, it has to go to highway and roads?
Yes, it has to, it has to be used on road, you know, roads, uh, road maintenance, road equipment, uh, all that kinda stuff.
But it doesn't have to be used this year?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, well.
We could apply it towards some of those difficult repairs that we've got lined up.
Yeah, 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 exactly, yeah.
Yeah, I think if you don't use it this year, it's gonna, it's gonna revert to the fund balance.
So we just use it this year, right?
So, you can either use it as revenue.
Yep.
And offset taxes with it, take it out of fund balance and offset taxes with it, or use it for something.
Yep.
That would.
That we were gonna do.
We were gonna do other anyway, or we weren't gonna do it anyway, that's, that'll be up to you.
Yep.
Um, once we have a hard number on that, uh, we can talk about how you might wanna do that.
Okay.
Um, and there's also additional bridge aid, we don't have anything at this point that's eligible for bridge aid. We do have big culvert projects, but we already know that at least one of those is not eligible for bridge aid. So they, um, that is an impactful thing, but I don't think it's gonna benefit us very much. Also, tax-related tax bills went out a couple of weeks ago, if you haven't received, residents, if you haven't received your tax bill, please call the town office, or should it, you should have it by now.
Oh, of course.
Yeah, well, it's, you're still gonna pay it, even if you didn't get it the mail or not, so we wanna make sure you get the mail.
I don't pick up my mail from June to December.
Understand. Let's see, um, two new hires in the fire department staggered over the next couple of months. Jay was able to, uh, find a couple qualified folks, uh, and Chief Woodman is here. Uh, she also has a new hire, and you have a, you come on up and tell us about your new hire, Chief. You have in your signature pile, uh, a request from, from Chief to, uh, make that appointment.
Yeah, so, good evening, um, I just wanted to give you like a one-minute, uh, briefing of the officer that I hired. Um, actually, uh, Dawn, I got to sit in on some of the oral boards, uh, for the process. Um, and as everybody knows right now, finding anybody in these public service areas is ve- very difficult. Um, but the candidate that I did hire is Austin Ragg, um, he has about three years of experience, um, in the state of Massachusetts. He's currently a, uh, Merrimack College Police Officer, um, and he lives local, he lives in Raindary. Um, so he'll be making, uh, the switch over here, he's really excited, um, just, you know, a lot, has a lot of certifications in Massachusetts, um, really personable, down-to-earth, very good, community-oriented, and I think he will be a good fit for us. So I just wanted to kinda give you a briefing on that.
What's his name?
His name is Austin Ragg, it's W-R-A-G-G.
I thought you said awesome, I'm like.
Yeah, well, he is actually, yeah, he's awesome too, he's actually awesome.
Yeah, no, as Font said, I, I sat in and I thought he was, I thought he was a really good, solid candidate, inserted really the best of what we saw that night, so.
Nice.
I think it's a good hire.
Yeah, I heard awesome also.
Um, yeah, like I said, I think it's a good fit and I'm, and I'm really excited, uh, to actually be able to fill that spot, so.
Great.
Awesome.
Cool.
Cool.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you for coming in.
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, alright, um, a cup, uh, one more, this Saturday, um, community yard sale here, Rex throwing, putting that together, uh, plant swap and yard sale, uh, Saturday morning, I don't remember the name, the.
Wait, is the whole yard sale here?
I think so, yeah. You here for the public hearing?
The road meeting?
Yeah, down in the gym, keep going down the hall.
Thank you.
Two questions for you, um, do you, uh, we've got a, we have a handful of volunteers for a building committee. Those typically get a, a charge from the board, a, you know, this is what we need you to go do for us. Uh, do you wanna have that discussion, do you wanna have that with them, do you wanna have one first and then ask them to come in? Do you, uh, what's your pleasure, we should get rolling on that if we're gonna put them to use, uh?
Well, we know who the, the members are, don't we?
Well, that's up to you, uh.
We have the list of who presumably are the members.
You have like three, right?
We have four.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we've discussed it enough, we could probably come up with a, a list of objectives for them.
Well, I think, I think the experience of the people that are gonna be on this board, I don't mind just having a straight meeting with them because they probably already know the objectives, being in town as long as they have and being past, you know, Gary being a past selectman, being a planning board member, being, um, who's really taken the initiative to get this, uh, committee started, that he probably, it might be nice to hear from him directing on what he's thinking.
Yeah.
You know, we can just coincide, you know.
I think, I think the one thing we should give them.
That would speed the process, I think, of getting them going.
I think the one thing we should give them is why we're doing it.
Sure.
Yeah. We're, we're not calling it building committee, right?
We haven't.
We have to come up with a, essentially, Steve, what we wanna do is have a committee of folks who are gonna take a look at the existing town buildings and make recommendations on, you know, renovations that might be required, future use, you know, that type of stuff.
Thank you.
Yep. But we haven't come up with a name for the committee which we should.
Uh, okay, so invite them to a meeting that works for your schedule and theirs?
Yep.
Okay, 'cause I really haven't thought too much about the buildings and maybe they have some more insight than I do already.
Exactly.
Ahead of time, so.
Okay, yeah, I know Gary has some ideas, I know the rest of them might be.
We should still come up with a basic list of executives, a bulleted list, and just say, this is what we're looking for.
Yep.
Yeah, this is, this is, uh, you're, you're gonna need to, um, appoint this group as a, you know, as a, as a body, uh, and we will, uh, treat their meetings and gatherings just like any other public meeting, it's minutes, it's a posted agendas and all those kinds of things. This is a, it's a formal entity.
Even, is it permanent though, or?
Doesn't need to be, no.
Oh, I was, I thought it was just gonna be.
Any, any formally-appointed group like that, uh, doing something on your behalf is, uh, covered by the rights and law and all that stuff, so.
Do we, do we want to just kind of maybe put some kind of a timeframe on it that says, like, by December first or whatever the date is, we'd like for you to come back with recommendations?
Uh, that makes sense, yeah, and we'd show them that you don't expect them to do this forever.
Correct, yeah, yeah, and we can even ask them for that date, but as long as there's a date.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, and then also, we've had, um, talking about the recycling center on the agenda list for a long time, but we haven't talked about what you wanna talk about, what do you want us to come with, what do you, you just wanna talk? Or do you want us to prepare anything for you, or?
I'd be interested in things that, you know, that maybe that, that we're not doing now that we, other options, other revenue-generating ideas or other uses, like I brought up the idea of, um, grinding up the glass into sand, some towns are doing that, you know, for their, you know, for their, their beaches or to make concrete or to spread on the roads, um, you know, there's, there's other things we could do. I just wanna explore that some more.
Anything else you wanna?
Well, I, I think the other thing too was that, with the way we talked about it, was that, you know, board members were gonna kinda do some of their own research and then come back, it, I think it's just a conversation, it's not a Sean Prepare presentation or anything like that.
Okay.
And I, I don't think we would come out of that discussion with anything specific, it might be just a general discussion and then, based on his input, decide what types of things we wanna go forward and pursue or research more.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Mm-hmm, okay, so more exploratory?
Yes.
Spitballing than anything?
Exactly.
Okay. Okay, thank you, that's all I need to prepare for that. Uh, that's all I have for you.
Hey, how about redistricting, how does that impact us?
Redistricting, um, our state senate district, we talked about this about a month ago, our state senate district has changed significantly, we're now in a district that reaches from here to Loudon. And I, 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 roughly, I think, uh, just from my head now, Deerfield, Northwood, Chichester, Epsom, Pittsfield.
One state rep for that whole area?
Uh, state senator, state senate district, right, uh, which we now share with more southern towns, so that's, that looks new. And the state house districts, I believe, I should've known, I should've known, I think it's us and Northwood for two. And I think that's it. I wa, I started chasing that, I didn't finish, so I will get that to you by email for sure, but, um, those would take effect for this fall's election.
Okay.
And that filing period is open now.
Okay.
Our, our, our executive council district probably changed too, those are humongous things.
Yeah, 'cause Pappas posted something on Facebook.
Uh, Papp, our, the congressional district changed very little, a few towns on the northern edge of our district went to the other district. So we're, the congressional district is, is effectively the same.
Yeah, I mean, Pappas posted though that he had, it's been his pleasure serving the town of Nottingham, and he won't be anymore.
Pappas did that? I think it was somebody else.
I'll go back and look.
Was, it might've been, any, any of our state reps that live in Deerfield now, I don't think are going to represent, or have an opportunity to represent this Nottingham anymore.
Okay.
I don't think it was Pappas that you saw. That's all I have for you.
Anybody?
You had stuff for me, yeah.
Um, one thing, Chris, uh, still waiting on something from Dale.
Yep.
Can we get that at the next meeting, please?
Yes, he's, he's been, he, he's, he's plotting it, planning it, aware of it, he's been busy, so I will, uh, I'll, I'll give that a push for you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, you guys wanna move on to assessing?
Sure. Um, alright, and all of the, okay, yeah, there's nothing, uh, alright, I'll make a motion that the Select Board approves the intent to cut and the intent to cut bond, uh, or the intent to cut for map fifty-two lot four dash two and the intent to cut bond for map twenty-three lot two.
Second.
All in favor?
And I'll make a, a motion that the Select Board approves the timber billing for map forty lot fourteen, map twenty-three lot two, and map fifty-nine lot one.
Second, sorry.
All in favor? Okay, great, easy, impact fee use.
Oh, you're jumping into, uh, general business, aren't you? Okay, that's fine, no, I can keep up with you.
Well, yeah. Yeah.
So, this is a tweak on, your last, last meeting, I wasn't here, last meeting, you, um, you voted to use fund balance to pay down the debt on the fire station.
Yes.
Right? Uh, which we've been talking about for a long time, is approved by town meeting.
Yep.
Uh, you know that whole story. Uh, one thing that we typically do this time of year, uh, which you can still do, uh, is use fire department impact fee money to pay down that same debt. We haven't actually cut the check from your vote from two weeks ago, so if you wanna use impact fee money to save a little bit more money in the bank, you can do that, or we can leave the fire impact fee money there for some future use.
So. Our, our motion was though to approve the use of nineteen thousand in impact fees and then up to thirty-eight in undesigned fund balance.
That's not what was recorded in your minutes from two weeks ago.
Did you look at the video versus the minutes?
No, I just read the minutes.
'Cause.
Did you vote, you voted to do that already?
Yeah.
Beautiful, good job.
We did, yeah.
We're done.
So the minutes just missed it.
Alright. Fire department, uh, debt.
Fire department, yeah, no, we, we did it.
Yeah, okay.
She just didn't capture it.
Okay.
Yep.
Great. Well, then maybe we should amend the minutes.
Probably.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, let's, uh.
Let's do that next week, our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that actually matters, so we will, we will amend the minutes.
Okay. You doubted us. Hey guys, if you're here for the public hearing on the roads, we're gonna meet in the, in the gym.
You don't need to.
Nope. Yep. Okay, cool. Uh, we're cruising, you wanna go on to, uh, do we have time to do purchasing and fund balance?
That's up to you, um, IT services, we might be able to, I wouldn't mind getting down there a few minutes early and just being in the room too.
Okay.
You may wanna do that as well.
Let's do that.
So we can start on time down there. Uh, explain to the TV audience and the video viewers what we're doing and vote to recess, no, just recess to the other room.
Okay, so, right now, the board is going to move from this room into the gym here at the town hall. We do have a public hearing on E nine-one-one and road re- renaming, so we're gonna move to the gym. That is going to be.
It's going to be recorded, it won't be broadcast live, so.
Not broadcast live, but it will be recorded, it will be replayed, um, via the community channel, so. And YouTube. So, we will return back to this room to continue our business as soon as that public hearing is done.
I'll make a motion to the Select Board go into recess for the duration of the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? And we will move to the. Hey, we're still rolling here?
We are.
As soon as Chris returns, we'll commence with our meeting.
We have a couple more things to talk about, right?
Yes, we do, and then we have non-public. You gonna have a plan tonight, did you?
No, no, this was my plan, it's all night, I figured I wasn't gonna get home anytime soon, I mean.
Yeah, I, I think when he gets back, you just say that we're reconvening, we don't have to move on it or anything. Yeah, I, I think the, the part folks were missing was the correlation between number and distance, you know? 'Cause like, i- if you're a mutual aid responder and you've never been to a given town before, well, if you know it's number twenty-five, if they tell you it's number twenty-five, then you know, following the fifty-foot rule, that it's about a thousand feet down that road on the left, 'cause it's an odd number. Right? It's that easy. It's not, it's not arbitrary, you know?
Alright, we've got purchasing and fund balance policies and IT services.
What do we need Chris for, what do we really need Chris for?
Well, we need, we need, we need him to walk us through, let me go see if I can find him.
When you come back in, Dawn, make sure you close that door.
He might've got snagged in the.
I'm sure he did.
Yeah. I think that was useful, I, I learned quite a bit that I wasn't aware of.
I learned quite a bit, but I understand the, um, I didn't wanna, I understand the importance of why this needs to be done.
Yeah.
You know? There is a higher, when, and, you know, not to talk out of, you know, in general about this, it's just a meeting, but the importance is, is public safety and the important thing is doing it now so that it's fixed right for the future.
Yeah.
People that have lived there now, I understand the inconvenience, but when they go to Southern House ten years, you got the new person coming in, you got the, you know, and it'll be fixed for all the down-the-road time.
'Cause in the future, it'll be worse, there will be more houses.
Sure, and, well.
You know, anything can be subdivided, anything can get a zoning variance, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And then you even knew with, uh, they don't call them cluster developments, but the new, uh, towns where, you know, you put so much in conservation and you've got smaller lot sizes.
Right.
Which is a big thing, that's, makes you all, all developers in town now are that way.
Yep.
So.
They want you to move in your house.
Yeah.
There's too much cement in the ground, I can't do it. Chris, nice job with your presentation.
Yeah, very good, thank you.
Ah.
Alright.
Okay.
Purchasing and fund balance policies. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, so this is a continuation of the Select Board meeting, we did take a break at seven o'clock to go into a public hearing on the E nine-one-one standardization, and now we will resume our, uh, normal business for this meeting. Okay, thank you, Tony. Purchasing and fund balance. You know, when, maybe I didn't look at it correctly, but when I got the, when I got the email that had the fund balance information in it, I didn't have a copy of the purchasing policy.
Uh, okay, do you have it now?
Yeah, we've got the printed copy here, but I never got it electronically, did you guys?
It was all one document by the time it left my hands, but.
It wasn't in the, it wasn't in there.
It's a PDF of all that put together, isn't it? Well, anyway.
Anyway, we have it here in front of us.
Here we are. Uh, so do you want an intro on this, do you, uh?
What do you guys wanna start with? Go ahead, just start with purchasing.
Okay, so, um, these are two, these are two policies that, uh, our auditors have pointed out we ought to have, um, and, uh, they're right, um, the, there's two, there's two separate ones, one is the fund balance policy. This is driven by, uh, GASB forty-five, one of the accounting standards board policies. Uh, I found, I don't know, six or eight towns that had this policy and it was identical. Everybody has the same one, it's just on file, it says, this is, you know, this is how we define the fund balance and check, the auditors won't deny you for not having this policy anymore. Doesn't really bind you in any way, shape or form, it just speaks to, um, how you're gonna use fund balance, sort of. But it leaves all the flexibility every year for the board to do whatever it wants to do, it's just a, this is a policy for policy's sake in many ways. And all the cities and towns that I found have the exact same one, so if somebody has figured out how to make the auditors happy and use this policy.
How close is it to our existing practices for all intents and purposes?
It's, yeah, well, this is essentially how we, how we do things, our range, you know, the range that we stay in, these are the ranges we've talked about when we've talked about fund balance, that eight to seventeen percent.
Yeah.
Um, uh, from the government finance, that exact citation, the Hampshire Government Finance Officers Association is what I always refer to when I talk to you about fund balance and the range of the fund balance, this is the same exact source and the same exact percentages that we've always kind of had our conversations around. So, it fits.
And we are effectively within that budget now anyways with our fund balance, correct?
Within that range, yes.
Yep.
Yep. Eight to seventeen percent of operating expenditures.
Yep. I don't have any questions. Balance policy.
No, me neither, I, I, I do remember reading a draft of it, I'm just trying to figure out when, but.
John, you have any questions about it?
From what I read, it was, you know, and now re- relooking at it again, second time, pretty much was always what I thought we were doing, so.
Yeah.
I don't think there's really much that was.
Yep.
That I noticed of anything that needed to be, uh, changed or looked at in any sort of way, so.
Do you want a vote for adoption tonight?
No, I'll clean it up and give you, you know, give you a couple more weeks to, if you wanna look at it one more time and then we can finalize at your next meeting, that's, that's no problem. Second one's a little bit more in-depth, the purchasing policy, we, um, we have a lot of practices. But we're pretty, on, in, in the grand scheme of things, we're, we're kinda loose with, with a lot of these things. With anything that comes within the budget, our practice generally has been, um, anything that's budgeted expense, the, but the department heads are responsible for managing those costs and they, um, you know, we, we, when we develop the budgets, we're, we're talking about most of these items, uh, as part of, in advance, as part of that, so, um, the big-ticket items generally aren't a surprise. A lot of the things that, that are laid out here are, um, they're, they're kind of putting in, uh, dollar levels at which different levels of approval are required or, or standards for things. This structure is pretty common with other towns, the limits are different in different places and, um, you know, some cities have, uh, more complex purchasing operations than small towns and they have, you know, different ways of, of doing. More complex purchasing operations than small towns and they have, you know, different ways of, of doing these things, but what really matters here, I think, is. Where do you wanna get involved as a board with purchases, at what dollar level do you care about, what we typically bring you is. You know, big capital purchases, things that we've gone out to bid with. You know, we don't, we don't bring, um, like the. The police cruiser, for example, we talk that to death. Uh, we tell you what the per, what, what the, what the vehicle is, is part of the budget process, and then we come out of town meeting and we say, okay, we got the budget, we got. Um, this is, this is the thing that we specked out, when we talked about it, we can go ahead and order it. Um, so it's, it's gonna put a little bit more structure on that, you'd see a little more traffic. In terms of things that you'd have to approve. And maybe that's something you wanna do, maybe it's not something you wanna do, this is, this is pegged, you, you would start to get involved at the ten thousand dollar level mostly, everything below that would be. Department heads and I making decisions based on the criteria that are laid out in here. And.
But even at that five to ten mark, we're still gonna be aware of what you're doing.
Yeah, you see this all in the manifest anyway, there's no.
That's why I'm saying it's not gonna be something where, I don't want people to be misled that we're giving you a free rein to.
Oh, just go spend ten thousand dollars and you're not aware of it, yeah, of course not, no, you, you, in approving the manifest, this is for the public, in approving the manifest, you're approving every purchase.
Except for the fact that the manifest is really.
After the fact.
It's after the fact.
Yep. Yeah, so you're aware of it, you're not really so much approving it as you are being kept abreast of it. Sometimes the checks don't actually get mailed until after you vote on it, but sometimes they do, so. Yeah, it's, it, some of it's after the fact.
So are you thinking that ten, ten is a high number?
I mean, there is a. Basis of, I mean, what is necessary to get done, you know, if it's something that we desperately need and it, you don't, you know, it's eight thousand dollars and it's not, you know. You know, wait for us for two weeks to do it because the, they need the extra cruiser, that transmission blew out and they gotta, you know, there's some.
Yeah.
You know, there's speculations to what we, you know, or, I don't wanna say speculations, but, you know. I think that we, you know, we trust the fact of the expenditures are gonna be proper, but if it's something that we don't need or, or it's questionable. You know, and it's an eight thousand dollar, I think I would like to be aware of what we're doing with that before we execute some checkout. Just unaware, you know, it's not something that says, hey, you know, we're. We're gonna go buy a new plow cuz we just didn't like how the other, I mean, I don't know, just.
Yeah.
Something of a bigger ticket over five, I'd just like to be somewhat of aware, not gonna say no or yes to it, but just. You know, I mean, I'm sure it's gonna be feasible, I'm sure the answer's gonna be the reason why, is in my history of doing this and sitting here, I don't think anybody's ever really. You know, overdid or overstepped what they were supposed to be doing, they're always responsible with what they, with their budgets and stuff like this. But again, this is for future, when you look ahead, not everybody that's here today, might be here later. So. I mean. I guess I'm just throwing that out as feedback, just on that. You know, again, I know there's necessary things we have to do, we have to purchase, you know, to keep operations and we can't wait the two weeks, but.
Yeah, those, there's, there's carve-outs in here, and if you go further down, you can see in the exceptions, there's, you know, things that are crisis level things.
Right, yep.
Right, we're not gonna, and, and there's a, there's a bunch of exceptions, like you're, we may, we may spend five thousand dollars a month on in health insurance. You know, there's a check in there for five thousand dollars, we're not coming to you and asking you, can we?
No.
Write that check, right, so there's, there's all kinds of.
I wasn't asking, I just, it was more just to be, if it was a.
Unplanned.
Non, unprecedented or something different.
Unplanned expense, yeah.
Okay. You know, that's just for us to be aware to say, okay, this is, especially now when we start with our. You know, with everything going up and going this, you know, we might not look at eight thousand dollars before as that much money, but when you're on a cap of four percent and you're on things. You know, you have three or four of those a year, that something happens, it starts to.
Yep.
Put another little number there that, you know, creeps up, so it's just to be aware that we're, I mean, again, I have all the faith and trust that, you know, the people that are with us today. Are gonna be doing the, the right thing for the town and stuff like this, and they're putting their best judgment. But I'm just saying it's, you know, for future wise, I think it should be. Somewhat of a practice that we are involved in, or at least aware of what's going on, you don't need our vote, but just aware.
So, um.
And again, I'm not trying to overstep my, our, ourselves.
No, there is, there is no overstepping here, this is, this is your, this is entirely in your authority, we can be as.
I just like to be aware of what it is, just to, I know, before we write a check.
Yep, uh, so if we were to. Sue, put in some kind of notification angle to this? Over a certain dollar amount, or, just trying to think of how to address it.
Anything in the five to ten range that seems to be abnormally? That's an expense, that we just get an email notification for it, just to, I mean, I look at mine every single day.
What if it's something in that range that isn't specifically called out in the budget?
Oh, like that transmission that blew out unexpectedly, right, that was eight-ish.
Seventy-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know what I mean, just. So unanticipated, uh, that, is that a good word to? Yeah, unanticipated, unplanned, unplanned expenditures over five thousand.
Yeah, and again.
That's the limit I had at U and H, it was the same thing, all the big stuff was budgeted in advance, but if there was something came up, or, you know, I, I had purchasing authority at the time. And anything over five grand, I needed to get a cosign out of the business office from my department, so.
And Chris, you've been great with doing it ever since I've been, you know, in my time here, you've been great, great.
Oh, yeah, no, no, we, we're making it up as we go along to some extent, but, and the things that, we always, in practice, we're always pulling out the things that are. Odd, politically sensitive, uh.
Yep.
You know, the things that are, that could make people uncomfortable in some way, are that we always trying to highlight those, but we should have something in here that guides that and says, you know.
Yep.
And i- is it? Un- unanticipated? Unusual?
Well, I, I just thought it's, don't ask me why, but like, let's say that fence over on South Cemetery, you know? I mean, we could literally go and spend seven thousand dollars, right, or five thousand, we go to bid and stuff like this, or. I don't know, I'm just using something.
Yeah, yeah, no, any of it, yeah, wasn't budgeted or whatever, the, yeah.
You know, somebody making the decision to go do that, when I say, well, this is really not a good way to spend seven thousand dollars.
Yeah.
You know, I might look for it, even, it might not be right now the best, and again, just situation wise, it's all I'm asking is for situations.
So anything un- unanticipated over five thousand?
Yeah, just a heads up.
I wouldn't say unbudgeted because then that would open the door to somebody saying, oh, there's no line item for that.
There's no line item for that, right.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll see if I can come up with some language about that, and it's notificat- notification before the fact is what you're looking for.
Yeah, before we send a check, yeah.
No, notification with enough time for the board to make a decision on it.
Yeah.
Or to express, you know.
Ask questions.
Yeah, to ask questions.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, better, better to. Separate the decision from the check printing because that can get wonky for no reason, so, as long as we don't send the check, this is.
Uh, well, I think what we're saying is we wanna give the board the option to say, no, don't.
Don't spend the money.
Don't spend the money.
Right, so whatever we do, however we process wise we do it, make sure there's enough time for you to hit the brakes on something.
Correct, yeah, exactly.
Right, but if it's something dire and need, an email to us will just be good, fair enough for that situation.
Exactly.
Yeah, and, and check the, check the, check the exemption language here, there's, there's like emergency things and.
Right.
Just make sure you're comfortable with that, I, I was intentionally very broad with that because I'm not trying to add red tape here.
That's emergency purchasing, right?
Yeah, there's, there's two, there's two things, there's exemptions and emergencies. Both are ways around the typical. Uh, thing, so, just make sure, and you don't have to do this right now, just make sure you're comfortable with those.
Yes.
Two sections because, uh, that's where, that's where problems will come from, that's where abuse will come from.
Yeah.
That's where surprises will come from, right, so that's, um. From a policy point of view, what you wanna, what you wanna look at. In the conflict of interest section. I mean, it, it, right now, it's only, it's only written to address issues with town employees. Should we specifically call out elected officials as well? Just thinking into the future. Do you wanna include elected officials in that list of restrictions when it comes to conflict of interests or ethical issues? Yeah, there's a, uh, I'm gonna go look at that, there's, there's a law about. That, that I wanna reread and make sure we do something in conjunction with that, it may be covered already. Right. Uh, which would make it moot here, but, uh, let me, let me flush that one out a little bit for elected officials. And you'd wanna be, you might wanna put a relief valve in there somehow, cuz if you. You know, this is a small town, we, we try to keep business local.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you, you know.
Somebody on the supervisors of the check last two is also, uh, you know.
Snowplow person.
Whatever.
Whatever, yeah, yeah.
We'd have to carve that out somehow, or make sure that you sign off on it.
Yeah.
Respecting existing relationships, so on and so forth, yeah.
Yep.
Cuz there are a lot of elected people.
Yeah.
And they have spouses and blah, 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 right, so, okay, we'll, we'll work on that one a little bit more. And the other thing, so the other thing that, that dovetails in here is, uh, the issuance of town credit cards, right, we, we've been trying to get to the point where we can get our department heads.
Yeah.
Credit cards so they don't, they can just run their businesses like normal people. And we need some policies around that, so make sure you're comfortable with where this is, this is. We're having some, having some challenges getting the bank to do what we want, but, um, what we're basically looking at is a five thousand dollar limit per billing period on a credit card. It's pretty standard. It, it kinda dovetails with the authority they have above, um, the risk here is, um, the risks here are. That those, those transactions are a little bit tougher to chase sometimes, you know, the, the, it's not a necessarily a, the same paper invoice before a check gets cut kinda thing, there's another layer of paper. In there, so it's, um, you, we have to, you know, we're gonna have to watch our credit card statements more carefully because there's more traffic there.
Well, how many credit cards you gonna have?
Uh, we'll have, each of the major department heads would have one, so, um, police, fire, public works, recreation. Library? No.
So you have five or four?
Five total. Yeah, I mean, that doesn't seem unreasonable. For the bank, I mean, I, I don't understand, but. It's the, it's the limits and the, um, it's just our, our, our banking relationship that we're in, which is tied to all kinds of things. They need that, there has to be a certain amount that we can break up, and I think it ends up. I think it's twenty-five thousand total. Per month? Yeah. Oh, okay, I, I get you.
But it's a credit card, not a debit card.
Credit, yeah. Yeah, it's a Visa or a Mastercard or whatever, yeah. Not debit card.
No.
No. Those are dangerous.
So wait, so. You're trying to put, get the credit cards company to put a, a limit on it?
There's a, the, yes, we can, we have some flexibility in terms of what we tell them the limit to be for each particular card.
Yeah.
Yeah, and what I have here is, uh, five thousand per.
Yeah.
Card.
Right.
Which is, which would be per department. But their combined limit is twenty-five, right? Right. So you could make that ten for you and four for everyone else.
Probably, yes.
And that would. Yeah, there's a, the, the, the bank's been a little sticky about it, so I have to drill down on that to make sure, but, um.
I don't see why that's such an issue.
I, I don't, I don't remember the story. Think about it, you know what I mean? No, the issue, there, there, there's gonna be a limit, that's, it's just.
Oh, but I mean, like, you can get a credit card, like, I could ask my bank on my credit card, I could say, listen, I don't want you to carry, I don't wanna have the available, not that, but. I could say, put my credit limit at, and stop it here.
Yeah, it's not been that, I, I'm sorry I don't know the details of it, I, I've been getting it secondhand, but it's, it's not been that easy, but if you aren't comfortable with five thousand, tell me and we'll, we'll keep working around that. Five.
I'm not comfortable, I just, I just, I just wanna make it logistical for the map, you know, and our. Us to be able to watch us being paid, you know, I mean, it seems to be simple, I don't know why it's, but again, I, I'm not. You know, purchasing or whatever, but it seems like, you know, the cards, you know, there are five cards here, they all, every card number's gonna be different, they all have this on there and. They're five different accounts and we're gonna pay all out of the same account from the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's all.
Board is writing five different checks to different, different accounts.
Uh, yes, it may, it, maybe it's five checks, maybe it's one check and they divvy it up, I don't know, but yeah, it's, it's five different credit accounts.
So we're not gonna run a balance on any of our cards?
No, no, we're gonna pay it all every month, yeah.
So it's.
Yeah.
That's why I'm just, I get, I'm just trying to wrap my mind, but I'm just saying that you'll figure it out, but just. I don't see why the bank is cost, is being.
It's, it, I, 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 I don't.
And again, we can drop it, I mean, for now, we'll talk about it later, but it just, it doesn't.
I haven't thought about it in a month, that's why.
No, but I think.
I don't remember what the heck up is, but the important point being, are you comfortable? With a, you know, with a five thousand dollar limit with that many cards? With, in those hands, and granted, these are, you know, these are department heads, they're making five thousand dollar decisions all the time, as you've seen above, they, they do that all the time, it's just a different way of paying for it. That's really what we have to check.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with it.
Um, next steps on this, Chris, like, do you want us to go through this version in more detail and come back to the, at the next meeting?
Yeah, or, or write to me with questions or concerns about any of those sections that we highlighted.
Yeah.
Um, I'll get you more on those other two questions.
Could you just note that as an action item, I assume you're going?
Yeah, I'll find a place to put that, sure, okay, action item, purchasing, and anything else you see in there that you're not comfortable or clear on, please let me know, but. Much of it is, uh, like everything else, is poached in, uh, in this case, I think I, I had two, I found two other towns, things that I liked a lot and I peed, I pulled stuff out of both of them, so that's where most of this comes from.
While we're on the topic of, of this and, you know, some of this stems from the fact that we get like a, a little ding from the auditors every year for not having these things. One of the other things that we get a little ding for every year is for this board not having a code of ethics. And, um, it, it's something that I think we should have, and if you look around at a lot of the surrounding towns, they do have them, and there's lots of examples out there. So I would like to pursue that if you guys are interested in doing that.
Yeah. I think that'll. Prove its worth in future years, you know?
I'm not opposed or against it, but I just, I'd like to actually.
We have a code of conduct, but not a code of, yeah, rules of conduct, or rules of procedure.
Right, yeah.
That we review every year, but, but no, yeah, no code of ethics.
I, I can send you some examples from other towns.
Yeah, I'd like to look at that first before.
Okay.
Cuz I always feel like it's, you know, I mean. I just have my own way, but I, I'd like to read some things first.
Yeah, that's fine, I'll, I'll show you some, yeah, again, I think it's, I think it's twofold, I think it, again, it's something we get ding for, by the auditors every year, but again, I think it's also something that. The board's gonna change and for, for future boards, it could provide another guiding argument, but I'll send some examples and we can just talk about it again. IT services?
Okay, uh, so I told you, I don't know, it's been, this has been going on for a few months now, um, our, we've had two. Kind of IT consultants, uh, working for us for years, they both worked for us longer than I've been here. One handling the police department, one handling town office side of things. The, uh, fire department's pretty well independent, they got somebody in-house that handles most of that stuff, we're not paying for it, one of the members keeps track of that thing, library does their own thing, so. Our IT support world has been two different vendors. Earlier this year, our, our vendor that has handled the PD side told us that, uh, she was not gonna be taking care of us anymore, this business is changing. His business is changing or getting out of the, getting out of the game. Um, and, uh, we need to find somebody else, and I said, well, we should, we should try and get everything under one roof, we, we oughta, you know. Gonna have one rather than two and, and look at our IT from a, a global perspective, so we, I issued an RFP for IT services. Only four months ago, five months ago, um, and got just knocked over at what the current market price is for. These kinda services are, and then the, the gist of what they're doing is, um, you know, monitoring our networks. Um, consulting with us on security issues, um, installations, upgrades. Um, on the PD side, that's things like the dash cams and the, um, all of that, all that new data. Uh, the, the, the MDTs in the cars, the, uh, that's all running through our server, so it's, um, it's specialized on the PD side.
And they're CEGIS compliant.
See, and, yeah, CEGIS is a, a security regimen that the police department has to follow. Um, on the town side, it's a little simpler, but, uh, involves our, our software vendors on this side are, um, assessing. Taxation, building inspection, um, that whole suite of, of things, uh, i- is all running through our network. So anyway, we, we have this, uh, this hodgepodge, we've limped along for years, um, uh, on the town side, it's been. A little bit of a very small monthly, um, monitoring and service charge and mostly à la carte, when we need help, we call and we get it. Um, on the PD side, it's been pretty similar, when we need help, we've called and, you know, got it on an hourly basis. Um, nobody really does that anymore, uh, and it, the à la carte model is, is gone, uh, with anybody that is. Um, serious about security and CEGIS and, um, and so. What we learned in going out to the market was that what we have now doesn't really exist anymore and, and, uh. And we know, we know that from a security point of view, particularly on the town side, we're just kinda keeping up, we're not ready for the next wave of. Um, of expectations from our insurers and, um, our, our security is, uh, minimal. But we have something, we have some backups, we have some, uh, some threat protection, uh, but we are definitely behind the times. On the town side, we're complying on the police side, um, and we need to, we need help, we don't have the in-house talent to do this, we gotta get somebody. Um, I was blown away by the pricing that we got on that first RFP, it was, uh, upwards of, uh, like, the highest one was probably sixty thousand a year for. Consulting and support services, um, we've spent, if we've spent ten in a single year in my time here, I'd be surprised. So, a, a multiple of, you know, the high end, five, six times what we're paying now. For an, an increased level of service and mu- much more security help, um, but, uh. More of a subscription model, you know, however many machines or however many seats or how many heads we're, uh, we're, we're supporting. Um, we obviously couldn't afford any of those high-end ones, so I went back to three of the five or six that responded to our RFP, and I said. I've obviously bitten off more than I can chew here, help me scale this back, help me ask for less and see what you can, uh, what you can do that fits in your. Fits with your business, and I, I did that with three of them and got kind of revised offers from, well, two of them. Uh, one didn't really move that much, um, and came down to this one, uh, that you have. Uh, which is about a thousand bucks a month with a limit on how much support we can get, but a limit that we probably won't hit. But includes a pretty robust, uh, security and monitoring suite of software, um, that would run us about twelve grand a year total, all in. Not including our software subscriptions, but just this IT consulting, uh.
Is that the, is it five hours of?
That's the cap.
Yep.
Per month. Um, just to put that to scale for you, I mean, we, on the town side, I, I think if, uh, we haven't had, we haven't had the, that guy in for five hours in a month and. Months, doesn't, doesn't happen, uh, the two combined, we may, we may bump up against it, I, I don't know. Um, there's a couple of big things coming up that, uh, with, uh, on the police side, so, um, you know. We'll, we'll find out how, how much we test that limit of, uh, on support, but this is the only way to get our foot in the door with somebody. At a price that we can almost afford, um, we need to have somebody that we can lean on, we, we just got through one conversion at the PD with our. Uh, vendor helped us out, but we're, we're really running without anybody right now. Um, and we have needs on the town side that we're gonna need to, we're needing to move on before, uh, August because of some election stuff, so. Um, this is as, as inexpensive as I've found with considerable effort, it's not something we budgeted, uh, it's going to continue to be a budget. Burner, it's gonna go on in the future years, this is not a get us through this year kinda thing, this is a change in how we approach this, um. Uh, so, it's not budgeted and I, I need, I need you to, I hope you will give me the option to go do that, um.
Have you met with these guys?
Yeah, uh, I, I, well, by video, um, but, um, uh, they've got other municipal clients, they speak our language, they know our vendors. They know our, like, our, our avatar system, our avatar software and our, our accounting software, our CEGIS stuff, they've done it all before, um.
Does IT help, I mean, I gotta, I'm gonna ask a stupid question, but I'll ask.
No, it's not stupid questions.
Uh, IT, does that help with what's going on here with our ca- uh, nothing, so it's just?
No, this is all, uh, PCs, no.
Okay.
Nothing for audio visual.
Nothing for communication, okay.
So.
Well, they could come into play for phones if, if that, you know, that, that kind of communications, but not this.
Cause they're IP phones.
Yeah, yeah.
So just, just to give you some perspective, I, I took a deep dive into this, and I, and I definitely agree that this is the best fit for us. Um, they're gonna be taking on a lot of duties that we just haven't had the capacity in-house to do, let alone expecting our. Ad hoc person to take it on, um, you know, for starters, the, the twenty-four seven monitoring, you know, for connectivity, backup server health. Integrity and performance, I mean, that's, that's huge, you know what I mean? And for them, it's just an automated system, they're adding more endpoints to their monitoring system, but for us, there's, there's definite value there. Um, they've got a good response time, um, you know, they support everything we have. Uh, there is a portal, uh, that Chris can use to, you know, submit tickets and check on the status of open tickets. Um, they do the upgrades and the updates and the patching, uh, they do the vendor interactions, um, they help with the strategic planning. They help with the, the asset management, and while I think early on, we may bump up against that five hour limit. Um, you know, case studies have shown for a very long time that when you first standardize your environment. And then manage it, your, you know, your support costs go down because things break down less. And we haven't had that, you know, like Chris said, we don't have the, the in-house, uh, person to take that on on a day-to-day basis, right? Um, so that, that is a huge win for us right there, especially on the strategic planning side, right? When they start managing our assets, you know, the, the lifecycle planning that goes along with our, our overall tech inventory, whether it's the. The laptops, the desktops, the servers, all the other stuff, um, we'll be able to manage those costs better, right? Planning ahead, like, we'll, we'll be able to know probably at least three to five years out what we're gonna be spending on new computers.
So that was part of my question of, you know, I mean, obviously this is all kind of what we need, but. Do we need, like, initially some kind of an assessment that says, here's where you guys are today, and here's where you're most vulnerable? And here are the things that we should prioritize, so will that be included?
Yeah, it won't, I don't think you'll see a fancy document come out of it, um, one of our, one of the vendors that I've been talking with actually. Wants to just do that for us for five or six grand, and, you know.
Yeah.
Here you go, here's your list of things to do.
Yeah.
Uh, here's your list of a hundred thousand dollars that you need to spend, to, you know, to get up to speed. Uh, I think this, uh, will be a little bit more, uh, that, that learning will come, it won't be all in the first thirty days. It'll, it'll evolve, uh, and we will gain the, that value over, you know, uh, over the six months that it takes them to get used to us and figure out our systems and all those things.
That, that's all I wanted to be sure of, is I don't want, like, I don't want them to just be in react mode, right? I think we've gotta, like, know where our biggest risks are.
Yeah.
And make sure that we're addressing those in addition to the day-to-day stuff that comes up.
Yeah, and I think the, um, the, the software layer, Tony, I'm gonna use the wrong words, but there's an install that they're gonna do as part of their monitoring. Uh, that is a more current, more powerful, uh, protection layer than what we're using now. So we're gonna make an immediate jump in just, uh, day-to-day security.
Endpoint security.
Endpoint security, um, and then I think over time, have a, a more comprehensive, because we don't understand what our risks are very well, so.
Yeah.
It'll take us some time to learn that, um, but over time, I think that will evolve into a pretty clear, okay. Over the next three years, we need to do X, Y, and Z to get where we wanna be.
Yeah.
And, and build that into a, a capital budget kinda thing.
Okay.
I will say, having, you know, having dealt with a lot of managed service contracts like this. Is that oftentimes, more often than not, they're gonna wanna do the assessment because they're assuming responsibility for all this.
Yeah, that's fair.
So they're gonna wanna do an assessment to know the lay of the land, and they're gonna, it's in their interest to share that with us.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, especially if they're gonna have to talk us into, you know.
Yeah.
You know, upgrade this, don't upgrade that, or whatever.
Yeah, we're, over the next few years, we're looking at probably security upgrades, um, server replacements and migration to cloud. Based subscription software, hopefully.
Active Directory.
Yeah, just.
Azure.
Yeah, whoever, wherever it lives.
Two thousand and three server, yeah.
Um, you know, we're, we're really, uh, and we could be, uh, we, we always nibble around the edge of talking about new accounting software. You know, new, you know, new, new, we're using a ridiculously old platform now, um, we're gonna need help when that, when that day comes.
Yep.
Um, so, it's all wrapped up into this.
So what do you need from us to do?
I just, I just need a nod and say, yeah, we, we believe this is money that we're gonna, we're gonna need to spend this year and next and the year after, because. Um, you know, we're, we're buying into a different mindset, um, and, and it's not huge money in the grand scheme of things, but it's.
It's less than the cost of a quarter-time employee.
Yeah, we keep, we just, we keep adding things on this year that.
It's gonna become difficult when we do the budgeting.
Right, we're, and I, and I, I don't do that lightly either, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, but this is one of, this is a service that we can't, we are in the computer age, we're going forward into it, it's, it's not going backwards.
Yeah, I, I can tell you, you know, working in security, I, I see alerts coming from, from the FBI every day, CISA every day, and. A lot of these, especially with all this nonsense going on in Ukraine, they are going after state and local governments big time this year. I'm surprised, I mean, not, I'm surprised we haven't had a major incident yet, really haven't.
You gotta nod for me.
Cause you're in our fund balance and say, ah, forget it, just kidding.
They're not worth it.
I'll get with it.
What's that?
Oh, yeah, um, yeah, uh.
Back Bay Networks.
Back Bay Networks, yeah. Yeah, highly recommended from, uh, we, we started with asking our peers, you know.
Yeah.
We, you know, and this, that's where this name came from, was a recommendation from.
They're called Back Bay?
Yeah.
Back Bay Networks, yeah, yeah. And just to add what Chris was saying about the, the endpoint protection, they, they don't say the, the brand, but it's, it's called MDR. Measured Detection and Response, so it's not just antivirus, it's also behavioral analysis and threat monitoring. Not behavior of the person sitting at the computer, but the behavior of the computer itself, what's it doing? Is it sending out email traffic and it's not an email server, things like that, that, you know, unusual activity coming out of servers that are not characteristic for its role. Those are the kinda things that this software monitors, and, yeah, we don't have that now, so, that too is a big win here, so.
Okay, is that all we have for public?
Yeah.
Anything else you guys wanna bring up before we go into non-public?
I, I don't have anything.
Mm-hmm. Yes, I think so, yeah. It looks like it's printed as one word, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's easy, it goes both ways, two words, two words.
It's two words.
Call it two words.
The logo looks like one, but the.
Yeah, but it's different colors too, so they, in the text, they're, they're two words.
Text is two words.
Back Bay Networks.
Sounds like a better idea, and so your mother will be happy, uh, when I know all this to get the computer working at the, so.
Good night, Steve.
I'll leave that for you, Chris.
Good night, Steve, all right, I will take a motion to go into non-public.
I'll make a motion, the select board enter a non-public session for RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, sections two, A, D, and L.
Roll call, oh, I need a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
I don't have any.
Hi, John Moore.
Okay, folks, thank you for bearing with us on this late night, we're going to go into non-public now, and after non-public session, we'll be coming back into public. Just for the purposes of adjourning the meeting, so, thank you very much and good night.